Good evening, everyone. This is a meeting of the Oregon Village Board to focus on budget. It is Monday, October ninth, two thousand seventeen, at five thirty P. M. I'd like to call the meeting to order and request roll call, please.
Balik.
Here.
Gudrow.
Here.
Brethauer.
Here.
Carpenter.
Here.
Grineer.
Here.
Jacobson.
Here.
And Staten.
Here, thank you. Item three is community input. Is anyone who would like to address the board at this time? We see none, we will go to item five, which is a joint meeting with the library board. I'd like to welcome the library board here. I see that we have a number of the members here, we appreciate that. And it will be, the action item is discuss and approve the library budget. And the first is review of library's five-year staffing plan, which in our booklets is pages twenty-nine A.
Yeah, we should probably call them. Steve, we should call the library board.
Oh, they have to do that, okay.
They should do that, please.
Okay, so I guess we have to call the library roll. Somebody ready to do that?
Kenny's gonna do that.
Okay, Candy will do that.
Brian Bustler. Jeannie Carpenter.
Here.
Robert Glasser. Jennifer Nelson. Carrie Santuli Shuda. Kyle Seibertson. Mary Stats.
Here.
Thank you. So now we're ready for the five-year staffing plan?
Yes.
Who is doing that? Looks like Nikki is.
You will find a copy of the ten-year staffing plan in your folders. This was something that was requested, or that we, all of the department heads submit.
And what we're gonna do is, we're gonna take all the department heads' staffing requests and put 'em on a one spreadsheet and map it out for the board, and then we're gonna try to actually cost it out to see what it, if we added everyone as they're requesting, what it would cost, and show the board what that would be over the next ten years. So I think it'll be, it'll be significant.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah? And I think probably then we'll either bring it back to the board, or maybe take it to the Genies Committee, you know, to personnel, have the committee first look at it, so.
Okay.
One thing that helps me to remember, and I always try to make sure that I talk broadly, is, you know, while we're focused on the expense and we're focused on the adds to staff as an expense item, we're not really talking about how that relates to the growth of the village, the projected growth of the village, and the levy grows right along with it. So, so I'm not suggesting that we need to be prepared to have a full discussion on all of that, but for the people that are watching, to remember that we're talking about an aspect of the village right now, which is the expense item, but there's a whole lot more that we could be talking about in terms of the revenue that's generated from the growth of the village that requires the additional staff.
The issue we have is somehow trying to deal with the mandated property tax cap the state has on us. And when you add a full-time position, for example, you're looking at a range of like seventy to ninety, ninety-five thousand dollars. And when our net new construction's going up about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, you know, that's seventy-five percent of your net new construction is already gone from one position. So that's where it makes it a little bit tricky.
So, when you talk, when you talk about adding one full-time staff member being seventy-five to ninety thousand dollars, are you, in your mind, are you adding direct and indirect labor together?
It does, includes benefits.
Yeah, so is your assumption half of direct is the benefits? So if somebody's making forty thousand a year, twenty thousand is benefits?
Well, yeah, because a medical insurance for a family plan alone is over seventeen thousand dollars.
Does that feel about right, half? Or is it more like three-quarters, or?
It depends on the position.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's gonna vary by employee.
Right.
I mean, you hire a public works employee, and you hire, not to pick on Brian, but hire a police officer, there's gonna be a difference in salary, obviously. And that's why I'm trying to give you a kind of...
Yeah, and so what I'm hearing you say is that there's, there's a connection between revenue and expense that we're bound to by state statute, that we have to kind of try to manage both sides of that balance sheet.
Yep. And, and both Brian and Jeff, when you read their memos, they, they really do talk about, and they will probably, when they're talking about this as well, the connection to the growing village and keeping our services at a, at a good level. It's just, you know, so there's definitely a balancing act.
Other questions, trustees, or comments, anybody right now? I think bringing that staffing picture to us will be good to have in the future.
So you'll bring this forward, kind of like we do with the capital budget?
Exactly, yep.
Okay, good. And then how many years out will you project it?
I ask people, department heads, to do ten years.
Ten years?
Yep.
Anything else on the staffing plan? Okay, so we'll go to item B, Fund Two-O-Three, which was created in two thousand seventeen, operating and building budgets for the library, which in our binders, pages thirty-two, thirty-three, and thirty-four. And there's a note from village administrator that his changes to library submitted budget are discussed below. He also discusses some key items in the library's proposed budget. It's important to note that per state law, upon the adoption of two thousand eighteen budget by the village board, the library board has authority to allocate the village funding, or they choose within library budget. And Mike goes on to say, please note, I made the following changes consistent with village budgeting practices. In the future, if the village board wants to handle the review with library budgets differently, there should be a discussion of changing the review process. So, basically what that means is we approve an amount, categories are recommended, but once it goes to the library board, they have the authority to, to put the money where they would like to use it.
That's correct.
Okay. So item A, reduce the proposed two thousand eighteen wage adjustment from seven thousand nine hundred twenty-nine dollars to two thousand six hundred forty-three dollars for one position, with the goal of finding the remaining adjustments in two thousand nineteen and twenty, similar to what we've done for other village employees. This employee will also receive the annual cost of living adjustment. This reduction is related to a discussion I suggest the village board should have regarding the process of including library employees in the village wage market adjustments funded by the general fund. You wanna start this one off, Nikki or Brian, with some explanation?
Well, I guess our, can you, I'm not sure if you can hear me.
Yeah, it's on.
Great. So, I guess that we would have an opportunity to talk broadly about the budget, but would like me to respond to each one of these points I can, it's your pleasure.
You wanna talk broadly about the library budget first? That's not a problem, go right ahead.
Great, thank you. So, I'd like to begin by sharing my sincere gratitude with all of you for the significant investment that the village board made in the library and our community with the two thousand seventeen budget allocation. Likewise, the library board, and I would like to thank you for the opportunity to discuss the library's two thousand eighteen draft funding request. I think that when you have the information, you will find that it reflects a strong commitment to both transparency and evidence-based cost estimates, which we are looking to maintain library services with in a time of significant transition. With your support, the library is able to impact community members and change lives. We help prepare children for school with storytimes, early literacy activities, and our one thousand books before kindergarten programs. Our summer library reading program this year alone served over eleven hundred different children and youth participants who were able to keep their reading skills sharp over the summer slump. And we engaged the curious of all ages with our solar eclipse event earlier this summer with UW Space Place and viewing, eclipse viewing glasses, which ended up having an overflow, overflow size. So, we thank you for all that you have done to help make us able to serve the public in these ways. I'd like to just close with a couple of quotes from some library patrons. The first person says, "The staff and librarians are always welcoming and willing to answer questions. My daughter's daycare goes to storytime almost every week, and she loves it. I love all the resources I have access to, thanks to Oregon Public Library." Another person says, "The library has saved me so much money, thank you." And finally, a local senior citizen, "I love my library. I couldn't live without my library, and I certainly couldn't live well without my library."
Thank you. Any questions of Nikki or Brian? Brian, you have some comments, go ahead.
Yeah, I had a, you can hear me, right?
Yeah.
Okay, great. I had a couple of comments as well. First, thanks to the Village of Oregon Board for giving us the opportunity to come and visit with you about our budget. Obviously, you get to hear from all departments in terms of their budget, and right now, there's a lot of focus within the village on the library, with the potential of having a new library building. I also wanna say thanks to Mike and Lisa. I had the opportunity to visit with them. I think many of you know we have an intergovernmental meeting where the school district and the village gets together, and during that, after that time, we had an opportunity to visit and then schedule a meeting to talk a little bit about our library board budget. And a few of the items that are listed in A through H, Mike and Lisa shared the village's perspective sort of in a big picture in terms of staffing and a few other things. One item that, or two items that the library board asked me to share with you is the importance of our materials budget. And we appreciate your ongoing commitment to support materials. And we're looking at, with the materials budget that we have in front of us, we will be able to maintain a relevant collection. We're also playing a little catch-up, I'm sure you've heard that before from other departments, and we're trying to get our collection level at a higher level. And then lastly, we're worried that if we don't continue to play catch-up and make it a priority in the next several years' budgets, we're going to get behind particularly, as Jeff mentioned, when we see a lot of growth in the community and growth in the use of the library. Then secondly, to pause and look at the personnel budget for a second, we know you face the same kind of challenges that the library board faces with retention and recruitment of employees. That, that's a challenge. We appreciate the village's support for what I'll call raises that go to all, all staff. But additionally, we have two positions, from a retention and recruitment standpoint, that are critically important, and that really circles around item number B with our vacant adult services and outreach librarian position. When I had an opportunity to visit with Mike and with Lisa, I better understood the village's philosophy on catch-up pay with employees. We haven't had a library board meeting since that, since that visit, but I'm going to share that information with the board at our next library board meeting. If you would like, we're happy, we can answer questions on A through H, and Nikki and I will just bounce back and forth. Hopefully, I got at question A, or item A and B. But if you have additional questions, Nikki, maybe you wanna take a shot at item C.
Item C, one family insurance premium from, removed from the library, and this could change during open enrollment. Yep, definitely, things can change during open enrollment, and we always try to respond to that. I always make a note in my budget narrative that whatever request we have takes that into consideration. So for instance, if we end up having more requests for use of this benefit from staff, then we would also request the accompanying increase in the allocation.
Okay. So I'm gonna read all these through H, just to have them on the floor, and then we can go to any one that we want to, as trustees feel. So, item B, reduce hourly wage from twenty-five to twenty-three dollars for the vacant adult services and outreach library position. Remove fifty-five hundred budget for unemployment expenses. This expense has typically been funded by contingency or fund balance in the past. And the library operating fund two oh three has a fund balance. We're handling this the same way in the village's general fund. Continue the step plan funding for publication subscriptions, audiovisual, and books in the two thousand eighteen budget. It was noted in the two thousand seventeen budget that the goal is to have a total budget of eighty-five thousand dollars by two thousand twenty for these three items. However, library director Nikki Bush has indicated she feels the total should be one hundred and six thousand seven hundred and thirty-four dollars, an increase of twenty-one thousand seven hundred and thirty-four dollars. This will be an issue for the two thousand nineteen and twenty budgets. And F, village administrator's proposed budget, continue the step plan for increasing staffing by two thousand twenty. And G, reduce property insurance to be more consistent with insurance increases in other departments. And H, starting with the two thousand eighteen budget, the library is no longer budgeting for donations and gifts and revenues. So, that gets all those on the floor for questions and comments, so.
So, I have a, a few questions. When I look at a budget, I typically look at large swings and try to get an understanding of how those numbers are moving around. And so when I look at page thirty-four, I see a couple of buckets of large swings, the first being in employment under library building. When I look at the current year budget, current year actual, projected end, and then the eighteen, it almost looks as if there's a significant decrease in expenditure from budget year-to-date, and a further decrease going into eighteen, but I'm not understanding why.
So, I believe what you're referring to on page thirty-four is the library's building budget?
The seller operation, yeah.
Yep.
The library building down.
Yep, okay, so that's, historically, the library has benefited from having someone employed by the village, usually from, from public works, who did custodial work for us. That is not currently an option. We have been outsourcing, in essence, since midway through last year. We plan to continue. It's going away from salaries towards direct service. So you see that there's an, should be an increase under contractual services. So that's the same page, the item ending two-nine-zero.
Yeah, I see it.
Jeff, you'll see that when we talk about the village hall and the other buildings.
Okay.
You're gonna see the same change.
And then in that same area, Nikki, just a question about the increase, the projected increase in electricity, telephone, and water sewer. It's not a lot, but just curious as to your thought process on the increase?
I've been watching what it's been costing us to actually maintain those services, and I wanna make sure that we have enough budgeted, but not inordinately more than needed. So slight increases.
And then my last question, which kind of ties into that as well, is, looking at the step plan funding, E, for publication, subscription, audiovisual, and books, and knowing that the library is bursting at the seams, where will you put the supplies that you buy with the increases that you get over the next two years?
The bottom shelf. Historically, we try not to use the bottom shelf, because it is not as easy to get to. But we have staff, and we're willing to help anyone who comes in either reach things on the top shelf or the bottom shelf.
Thank you.
Historically, has the library budget followed the, have you followed the actual budget recommendations? According to Mike, you can change the, shift the money around.
So, in my experience, which is somewhat limited, we have not shifted that around a great deal. There was, in the building funds, the shift this year in how we spend those monies, because the public works individual was not available to continue the cleaning service. So, we needed to outsource. That's the only shift that I can think of. Otherwise, I work quite true to form.
Doug, I've been on the board for a decade plus, and while there have been some shifts and changes, I wouldn't say they were significant by any means.
So you anticipate what we talk about here will stay pretty much the same?
I, I do anticipate that. I have slightly more up-to-date numbers than you may have in front of you, which I'm happy to share with you now or later. Totally, just wanting to make that available to you.
Okay. Jerry, you had a?
Yes, I did, and I have a question that's probably gonna piggyback on something that Jeff touched on, and that's the, the increase in publications, I think, yeah, publications. It's about a twenty-five percent increase. What is causing that?
The increase in publications?
Yeah, the audio...
Item E.
Publications, subscriptions, audiovisual.
Oh, all those kind of wrapped together.
Yeah, right.
So, you may recall, last year, I discussed perhaps doing a stepped plan in which the first, we would try to first of all, catch up and make sure that our operating expenses are covered within the operating budget. We had spent down our gift funds to the point where that was no longer viable. And so the big first step was last year, in which you guys made a significant investment in making sure we're able to meet our daily operational needs with those purchases. We've historically purchased that amount, it just wasn't through village funds. We relied on gifts and bequests and that sort of thing, which are not indefinite. So, then the stepped plan includes a smaller increase for the three remaining years of a total for all of those lines, the audiovisual, the books, and the print subscriptions, those three lines totaling seven thousand five hundred dollar increase each year. That was my, that was the idea that I brought to you last year.
Okay, and then there?
Big ticket items. Our materials budget held steady for approximately eight years prior to that, and the cost, I believe, went up about... I think, I had in last year's budget, like minimally seven percent per item. And so we had greater increases, greater needs. Also, the higher... Encourage us to have enough materials to meet our patron needs, our population needs, and so we're striving to meet that target as well.
Can you give me an example, I guess that's what I'm looking for?
Like how much a book?
Or, what would be included in there that would account for a big increase? Just one item?
Just volume.
I can give you an idea.
Okay.
I can, I think this is where you're going with it. If I were to describe the budget, I would, I would not start with publications, subscriptions. I would start with this term that we're all familiar with.
Okay.
Books.
Okay, so you're gonna buy more books?
We're going to buy more books at the library, and you know that is sort of our heart and soul.
Yeah, I was just wondering, what kind of expensive publications are you gonna be getting? Songs, no.
They're different flavors of books.
That's great. Okay.
Sometimes I need to get out of my technical brain. That was great help, thank you.
That's why there's two of you there.
I know, we're like a good team.
Other contractual services, two-ninety?
Yeah.
That account is doubled. Can you give me an example of why, or what those additional funds, actually it goes...
Are you, are you on page thirty-four?
I'm on page thirty-three.
Thirty-three.
And, uh, current year, they're projecting a fifty-nine-hundred dollar expenditure?
Uh, yes.
And then the, I think your budget is a little over sixteen thousand? And then the, I guess, I don't know, Mike?
That, that's where, that's where the unemployment was budgeted.
Oh, that's unemployment?
That's, that's the difference.
Well, that's a great chunk of that, yeah. With the unemployment. I had been given a figure of what we might anticipate paying, and included it in a budget.
So is that the same with audiovisual, you're gonna buy some new AV equipment? Is that what's going on there?
It's like DVDs, books on CD, any audio or visual type material.
Very good. I just saw some big swings there and thought I'd ask about them.
Sure, yes.
Thanks.
No, you're welcome. I'm sorry, I didn't get your question right away.
Don't worry about it. You've got Brian there to help you.
Thank goodness.
Judy, you had a question?
Yeah, maybe this question is for Mike regarding item C, removing the family insurance premium. So, what do we, if an employee takes family insurance, how does, is the department required to find that in the existing budget that we passed, or how does that work? Because that can be a big chunk of change. And I remember that we sort of went through this last year, and that was fairly awkward, so I'd rather not repeat that. I don't know if Jeff remembers that, too?
So, well, before we get to the public hearing on November twentieth, we'll, we'll know that, because open enrollment ends on October thirty-first, right? So we'll, we'll know that.
But, so, you, you took that, that money out of the library budget, will, will be added back in? Or would the library have to find that seventeen thousand dollars from the money that you recommended?
I, I will discuss that with the village board.
Okay.
How we, I mean, I'm not gonna just say that it's for sure. I mean, other departments, we've said that they're, they get a surprise in October that somebody who has never taken health insurance decides to take it, and you, and you have to come up with seventeen thousand dollars. I've said in the past, well, you know, you need to go back through your budget and try to find some of that versus just us giving you seventeen thousand dollars as you try to keep the levy down. So, I think if that happens, I'll come back to the board and talk to the village board about that.
Okay.
And that'll be for other departments as well.
Just wanna make sure that we're not setting us up for, for decisions where we're having to, you know, perhaps a department can't afford to, to do other things, because their employees take insurance, and, and they're budgeting for it, but then it's being taken out. So it's like you're being penalized.
Well, the, the reason that we took it out is because the vacant position is being split into two positions now. So it's gonna be two positions as opposed to one. So for somebody to take the health insurance, working only half-time, would be very costly to that person.
Okay.
So that's why it was removed, and the, and the expense wouldn't be seventeen thousand then for the village. It would be a much lesser amount. That's why we took it out, because the position changed.
Okay.
From a full-time to two-part-time.
That is, that is true, and there's another position that would be potentially qualifying, but...
Actually, two.
Well, okay, that's right, it was two individuals, thanks for clarifying. That would potentially be qualifying, if there would, could potentially be some cost to the library slash village, should they choose to take that, that is their option as employees. But, those are, I understand, not included in the numbers in front of you.
So, Jeannie, one year, we had, we had three employees, this is a number of years ago, that decided to take family health insurance. So, you know, the village had to come up with at that point probably like thirty-five thousand dollars. And, you know, so, we, we just didn't say, oh, we're gonna add thirty-five thousand dollars to the levy. We went back and talked to department heads and said, you gotta, you have to help us try to figure this out. And so, I, I can't sit here and say that we would just automatically add, you know, sixteen or seventeen thousand dollars to any department without, you know, talking to the department head about it, so.
I have another question.
Jerry?
A question on the library county grant.
Yeah.
Has that number been confirmed? Because I know the county isn't done with their budget process yet.
Those are anticipated.
Okay. So...
So, if you, so I think what you're looking at are, is a version of the numbers that are submitted by all the department heads. I've also put together some spreadsheets and a budget narrative that explains how we came up with all of those numbers.
Is that something you apply for each year, or?
That is something that we, so if it's the Dane County one you're referring to...
Yes.
We do have to request the cross-county ones, but the Dane County one, we are only eligible for that if we are not, if we're able to maintain our standards.
Okay, and then the county library reimbursement?
That's the cross-county one, I think.
Could you define what that means, cross, cross?
Sure, absolutely. So, state statutes allow for us to ask for money from other counties that are adjacent to us for services already rendered. We can ask for up to seventy percent. We can ask for, we can ask for more, but they're only required to pay us up to seventy percent of what the service we've actually rendered, and that's what that is.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
So I have a question on item A on the wage adjustment. As proposed, that was about a sixteen percent increase?
It was significant, but it would, and it would bring that person up to the median with others, the same position in other libraries, similar libraries across the county. I know that other departments, or the village as a whole, has tried to take a look at this as, how can we raise everyone up? But when we costed out how much it would cost to get the library alone, all of the workers up to the median cost, it was cost prohibitive. The library board has thought to take an approach up till now, where they thought that they might focus on some of the most, positions most in need in the short term, and systematically go through those and try to raise them up, since we can't afford to do all of them at once.
What communities do you look at when you do that comparable?
I believe, well, I was not part of the actual study, but I believe that they looked at, for instance, probably be DeForest, maybe Stoughton. I, actually, there are two people here who took part in that study. Dr. Bustler and Mary Stats would both be able to comment. I was not at the table for those.
Okay.
Steve, what I'm recalling is, I'll call it the ring around Madison.
Yeah.
And I think we may have included a couple of communities, perhaps Evansville, because they're somewhat adjacent, somewhat adjacent to us. But we tried to make it comparable and look in the Dane County area, because that's that... But we tried to make it comparable and look in the Dane County area because that's that recruit, that's that recruitment and retention.
Right.
Oftentimes, we are hiring from one another.
Yeah, yeah, we've seen that too. Okay, thank you. Any other questions from trustees? Anything else from library board or Nikki staff?
So there's more items on page thirty?
So we are through item H and on to item C, Fund 202 Special Fund, pages thirty, thirty-one, and thirty-one A. So we can turn to those.
I was thinking that this might be something that Lisa could shed some light on.
Tool two?
Well, okay, so.
That's what you submitted.
All right, I'm just catching up with you then. I thought for a second you were referring to something else. So the general 202 funds, we, there's library impact fees, which I've not calculated that part. I believe Lisa's inserted those numbers.
We take, we take kind of what the average number of new residential homes are per year. Forty homes times the $422. That's where that number comes from.
So historically, we've used these to pay for operating expenses. We've been trying to move away from that. So we are generally not populating that section of the budget right now. Department of Public Instruction best practices indicates that we should not use gift funds for that purpose. So therefore, we've tried to avoid that moving ahead.
Okay. Other questions?
Yeah, so again, looking at trend lines, there's some really large swings. And I'm having, I'm not able to see what, if there's a, if there's a commonality. So could you maybe just, as you look through, like, starting on page thirty, the library impact fee, the prior year actual, current year budget, current year actual, and then the eighteen budget goes back down. So, so I'm seeing several of those swings throughout this, this report, but I'm not able to really understand why.
The library impact fee, I mean, that's based on how many actual resident, new residential homes we have in a year. So that's why that one fluctuates.
So is it reasonable, if we had a budget of sixteen, eight, eighty this year, but an actual of forty thousand, that we would go back down to a budget of sixteen, eight, eighty for next year? And then, and then do you just accept everything as over that as being opportunity for the library to make up another areas where they come short?
Well, the, the impact fees can only be spent on a new library, so that's what it's for. Those impact fees just roll to the bottom, to the fund balance. And then as they begin to do the library, the new library, those monies will be spent out of that fund balance.
So would you consider the sixteen, eight, eighty to be a placeholder, not to go below, sort of a placeholder? Is that the reason for the number?
It's just our best estimate based on number of lots available, potential new development, and what may happen next year. We can't really predict.
So, so Jeff, there's, right now we know there's Bergamot that's still pulling permits. The Bergamot's done with their townhomes at this point. And so really, it's, it's single-family homes in the Bergamot. There, there could be some that have come out of the Lubopolis, but, but, you know, we're, we're probably looking, that's what we were saying about, when we were talking about the CIP. We think that eighteen may be a slower year than in the past as far as people pulling permits at this point, unfortunately. So hopefully we're wrong. Hopefully we have a really good year, but we're being somewhat conservative on that, yeah.
So I appreciate that answer. If we go further down under, starting at GL three twenty-six and going to the bottom of the page, gift accounts, operating supplies, other supplies and expenses, looking at gift accounts, operating supplies, and capital and buildings, all, all of those, those four general ledgers have kind of trended down to zero or close to zero. Are those sort of phased out? We no longer use those? Is that what you were saying earlier about gifts and?
So we've used up our gift money in essence. So we, except for a couple of things that have been designated that are sort of on hold, that we're not able to spend for other purposes. So yes, those are winding down. We're not able to spend from them because there are not funds there.
And then.
Jeff, I would just add to that. We used up our gift money consistent with the intention of the gift donors.
Yes, absolutely.
So if, if the donors left the door wide open.
Yep.
Over the years, we have picked out items that we weren't able to fit in, in the budget and purchased them. If the donors were super specific, we purchased only within their earmark request.
Thank you.
And we're just at a point where that's, where that is trending almost down to nothing.
Thank you.
We're hoping people are saving money and going to help us with the construction of a new library.
That's, that's a really good point. And I would like to explain that, you know, a lot of the gifts, any larger gifts that we have received historically have generally been when someone has passed. And that's not the kind of thing we can build a budget on, nor would we want to.
So my last question for you is, operating supplies, that general ledger that ends in three forty? What, what, so what is that that it causes, that caused it to decline over, over the past couple of years? And then what is it about that category that has you anticipating it's gonna go up next year?
So from the two thousand and change that currently is to five thousand, that's an estimate. That would be spending down the library fund balance further. We want to, I guess, allow for that possibility. We don't know what our expenses will be.
So it's kind of a placeholder?
It is.
Thank you.
Other questions? Anyone? Okay, we'll go to item D, Fund eight oh four, the Waxman Trust Fund, page one oh seven.
The Waxman Trust Fund is a, not a fund that we're able to touch. We're only able to make use of any interest that comes off of it. It's in a CD. It's $10,000 and any interest, you know, it's pretty minimal that we receive from that. But we could use that to, for library services.
Okay.
It's a non-expendable trust fund.
Yeah. Okay, item E, Fund four thirty-three Civic Campus Plan Project, pages ninety to ninety-one. Fifty thousand dollars has been budgeted for the library feasibility study. The library board will have to approve the use of impact fees for the study.
So I think that was one thing, I'm glad it was brought up here. I think we were waiting on the village attorney to see if we were able to use that for a feasibility, impact money for a feasibility study. I'm not sure if we ever got the definitive word on that piece. I think it depends on what kind of feasibility study, so.
Yeah.
We're, we're.
I thought that Matt addressed it, but I can check with him again.
Yeah, let's check with Matt.
Okay.
Yeah, the other, the other thing on that item, I'm forgetting exactly the month that we had a joint library and village board meeting. It might have been August. And we were talking about the impact fees and what those impact fees could be used for. And I recall an overarching conversation about using some of the impact fees to offset land purchase. And we also meant, we, being the library board, we talked about the possibility of using, we were fine with some of the impact fees being used to offset the land purchase, but we also wanted to hold on to some of the impact fees so we could get ahead of the game with the feasibility. I think we could use the term feasibility study. It could also be architectural work. So this is something, perhaps when we have our MOU meeting coming up at the end of the month, that we can dive into those details a little more because we want to be your partner.
Yeah.
With the land purchase, but we also need to, we also have that fiduciary responsibility to hold back a few funds so we can jumpstart the architectural process.
Sure, thank you.
And I mean, I, I put it in because I just thought, we've been talking about it and, you know, I know Nikki and I have talked about that. It's the feasibility study or whatever you want to call it, it's gonna be the key thing to help do fundraising. We're gonna have to come up with.
There's a couple.
A nice board, but, yeah. So at this point, it, you, there'll be other things in the budget that I'm, I'm showing as a placeholder and the levy board. That's why I made it very clear that they obviously have to approve the use of the, of the fees, so.
Yeah.
But I, I think it's a great thing to be talking about how we can move forward together successfully on that, so I thank you for that.
Okay. Jerry?
Yeah, I just, Mike mentioned something that I just wondering, the feasibility study, will seeking donations or for the library, is that gonna have to wait until the feasibility study comes back or?
Um, I don't think generally seeking the funds would need to wait. I did request that we start a fund that, under the two oh twos, that would be specifically for any monies that people might like to contribute. And any paying out towards the cost of a new building. So once that's in place, I think we would have a nice spot for that to go and that we can use that funding effectively.
So are you seeking?
We are not seeking, it seemed imprudent to get ahead of the process.
Okay.
At this juncture, so we are waiting on the memorandum of understanding to see where we all are and be on the same page that we can.
So the MOU would be after that?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
But if you know someone that happens to be interested, we do not want that to, we don't want the timeline to get mixed up.
I'm sitting next to a personal contact.
Excellent. Thank you, Jerry.
I'm talking about.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
If I can just draw your attention to the next, the next item that is on the agenda after the, the library board's done is sort of dealing with Brian was talking about. If you look under number six, you have the agenda in front of you. Make sure Brian knows it. Yeah, okay.
Okay, so any other questions from trustees? Any other comments? Okay, so we have the items for the library budget that we have discussed and looked at in our packet. And we now need a motion in a second to approve that.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
In the post, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Appreciate your library board.
Yeah, so. Yeah, adjourn the library board.
Candy, could you take care of that for us?
Yes, it's, I have a motion too.
Oh. We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second? And we have a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye? All opposed? That motion carries. We are back to the village.
Thanks, Brian.
Thanks, Brian.
Thank you very much.
Okay, that takes us to item six, the 2018 Budget Overview and Proposed Tax Levy. That's in our binder on the overview tab. There's a note, "In 2016-17, the general fund advanced $107,188 to help cover the purchase of the former Methodist Church property on Main Street. Upon the completion of the memorandum of understanding with the library board, this advance will be paid back with library impact fees." So before we begin this, on behalf of the board, I'd like to thank the department heads and Mike and Lisa for the budget you've brought forward to us. It's understandable, and it's a reasonable budget. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
So item A, Review of General Fund Revenues, pages one through four.
Steve, do you mind if I do?
Just a general overview, yeah.
Do you mind if I do that for a few minutes? I, I won't read it, I promise you.
No, whatever, you always do a good job with that, so whatever works for you, whatever works for us.
So I'm starting on page two, I, I do wanna highlight that it should be noted, the department head submitted well-thought-out department budget for my review. It really, Lisa and I talked about it. It made it the process easier this year because we got them and we looked, we looked through them. They are understandable and they were easy to review, so I appreciate that a lot from the department heads. The next budget meetings are October twelfth, this Thursday, and I know two board members, two board members can't make it. So we'll have, obviously still have the meeting in there.
Yeah.
And then we're gonna have a third meeting on the twenty-third, which will also be a regular board meeting that night, so. At this point, we're recommending a estimated tax increase of $69.85 for an average home in 2018. As we note, if your home value is going up less, if you look on page three A, then your taxes will not go up as much for the village. And actually, that example two is my house, to show you the, the difference that if your, if your house is not going up on the, the average, what the village is, your taxes are not gonna go up as much. A lot of people probably went up higher from sixteen to seventeen. They may not be going up as much from seventeen to eighteen. So we're trying to give you a couple of different examples.
Okay.
Yep. So this, so basically the sixty-nine eighty-five is that if your house is $257,000 and is going up exactly to two-seventy-five, and obviously, you know, that's going average to average, so. And I, we always say at this point that there's a lot of things that we haven't heard back from the state on. We're still waiting for the road aid, which will have an impact on the, the budget. We're just talking about health insurance, open enrollment will have an impact possibly. And overall, the tax rate is actually going down from five forty-three to five thirty-three, but it's the levy that really drives the, the increase, the rate sometimes is, can be somewhat misleading depending on the situation.
So what you're saying is the tax rates go down, but that doesn't guarantee your taxes will go up.
Right, so that's your house.
That's right.
Yeah. Sure, revenue's going down a little bit, less than a thousand dollars. And experiential restraint is going down almost thirteen thousand dollars. And that's, I think Lisa and I concluded that's because more communities are, are complying with the experiential restraint program, trying to get the money from the state. Hi, Ryan. Yes, please. I'm sorry, he's making a blur here.
No problem.
No problem. Get you on TV.
Are you, are you bringing?
Ryan.
Are you bringing money?
Sorry about that.
That's okay.
Yeah, we're, we're still waiting for the highway aids and recycling grants to be confirmed. On page six, I do note that we are gonna increase the cash payment to the youth center to $10,000. It's been $9,000, I think, since they opened, so I thought it was very small increase. Yeah. So some of the main reasons the tax levy is increasing is, and as you know, you know, we, we just settled with the police union, I think, a really good contract, but that's obviously having an impact on the, on the, on the levy. We're having, we're increasing the legal budget for general representation and prosecution work. The levy for debt service is increasing. And then we reassigned a custodian position, which has resulted in us adding more cleaning company services, but also now has provided additional staffing to do mowing of grass and other public work duties, as Jeff has been requesting. On page eight, we talk about adding a limited-term employee for mowing village parks and green spaces. And I know this is something that Jerry would like to talk about on the, on October twenty-third, but I know you're not gonna be here Thursday night, right?
Right. I, I guess I'd just like to make sure the board understands what we're committing to. And what the cost is and that. It is a very small subsection of the village that is concerned about the mowing process. More specifically, they want to make sure the retention ponds are mowed, even though none of the surrounding communities, including the city of Madison, mows those areas. So when we get done, we may decide that that's still a good practice, but I think we should talk about it a little bit more and see if we can understand what it's gonna cost us to do that. Because those funds could be directed, possibly be directed to a more appropriate expenditure, so. I guess that's it, so.
Okay.
If we could do that on the twenty-third, I, I know I'd appreciate it, but it's not, certainly not required.
We'll do that the twenty-third.
Okay.
Yeah, we need to talk about that as a board.
We're adding LTE to do some conversion of the cemetery records into the new software management system. And then we're, we're adding the fifteen thousand facade grant in TID five, which is, we started that this year, but now we've made it an official budget line item for next year. Health insurance is, the percentages are increasing the, I'm sorry, are staying the same for the employer employee share next year. We are gonna be carrying over $13,000 from the 2017 budget for a total of $30,000 to make the market wage adjustments in eighteen. And we anticipate doing this again in 2019 as we try to bring our employees into the mid-range of our comparable communities. And there's, at this point, there's a two percent across the board wage adjustment in the eighteen budget. Jeff will talk about this on Thursday night, but we're combining the seventeen, eighteen funding to have a budget over $500,000 for street work next year. That does not include what we're gonna spend on the extension of Perry Parkway, which is at this point at 1.2 million dollars. So that has actually gone up quite a bit. We were showing it around $900,000 and it's just, it's, at this point, it's going up. $90,000 for removing the yardway site, and then $125,000 for installing the sidewalks on Perry Parkway and Wolf Street next year. on Perry Parkway and Wolf Street next year. We're talking about two squad replacements in the police department. I know Brian's going to want to talk about a possible additional squad when his budget comes up. We are purchasing a new leaf vacuum truck next year, and then some miscellaneous equipment, including we're, we have to get going in setting up the emergency operations center. So, we're, we have $7,000 in the budget for that, as well as replacing some of the tables and chairs in these two rooms.
Mike, ask a quick.
Sure.
Quick question on the subject.
Yep.
Is it, in past budgets, we haven't really talked a whole lot about the fire district and the EMS district, and now that we're kind of getting to the point where we're starting to be more aware of capital improvements that need to be made, is it, you think it's worth noting that we are going to be making investments in the fire districts?
Well, I didn't do it in my, I don't have it in my overview. They're on, they're on the butt, they're on the agenda tonight.
Yeah, I just didn't see it in the overview.
Yeah, I, I didn't. I didn't, I sent it to pick on Glenn this year, so, you know, I didn't make a point of talking about. I, I thought because we had the joint meeting already, I was trying to bring things out that were somewhat new, that the board hadn't really seen. That's, that's part of the overview versus, so, but we can start to talk about when we get to that point.
Well, I, I guess I'm a little bit sensitive to it only in as much as I'm a representative on the commission, and, you know, up to this point in my tenure, we really haven't had a lot to talk about. But now that we have a new chief in place and we're, we're looking at the equipment and the depreciation of the equipment, it just seems as if it's becoming more and more and more a part of, of what we have to consider as a village, being that what we typically pay about 69%, is that right? 63%?
63.5, I think.
So, the lion's share of what happens in the district falls to us, and I don't know how aware the rest of the board is, you know, that those are some significant numbers that are coming down the pike, and, and we should be filing that away in the back of our minds. And it is a department of the village. It's not one we've talked about a lot, because we share it with the surrounding towns, but.
Just, Jeff, be careful. It's not a department of the village.
Well, I apologize.
No, I'm not, I'm not trying to be sarcastic. Just, that's a very sensitive issue.
It's a misstatement of a fact that perhaps I got wrong.
Just, yeah.
We are part of the district.
You're part of the district.
Yeah.
And a significant part of the district.
Exactly. And, and I guess that's what I meant to say.
I know that.
But I, I'm trying to get my head around exactly how everything fits, and that's, and that's what I've come up with to this point.
Well, we have to bring the village's CIP back on November 20th when we adopt the budget. The board's going to look at adopting the capital improvement plan at that point, and part of that will be, we can talk about the fire district, you know, part of that CIP, so it'd be a good time to talk about it as well.
And I think, you know, if it wouldn't benefit the board, because the board sits at the joint towns meeting as well, maybe for the people that are watching, or maybe I'm, I'm off base. It was just a thought that came to me as I was looking through this from my perspective.
Yeah. I think, Jeff, it's good for the public to know how this fits together, but it's like Mike said, and we may have all made that same thought you had as a village department, but it's not, and the towns are very sensitive about that, rightfully, so.
Yeah.
So, to put it at the same place in our budget process, I think is making it look more like a village department.
I see.
As opposed to keeping it at the joint meeting, and then when we, we go through the capital improvement plan.
Sure.
If that sounds okay. That's how I would see that right now.
It certainly makes sense to me.
Yeah.
That that's the process, and I appreciate the explanation of the facts, because those are really important.
Yeah. And I go back long enough on this, as does Jerry. Do you remember when there was some ill feelings and antagonism based on how everything kind of fit together between the village and the towns?
Yeah.
And we've worked our way through that as, I know David Donovan got on the, the commission, and now you and Darlene and so on, and that's all leveled off, and it's a very, a very good joint process.
Well, I asked for forgiveness from the towns, and I, I'm not looking to kick the hornet's nest here, so.
Well, if we hear about it, we're going to send them your way.
That'll be the last time I make that comment.
I've got your cell phone number.
Okay.
Thanks, Jeff.
Yeah.
Thank you. So, back to page 13. At this point, we're, to help balance the budget, we're starting the deputy clerk position as a 5118. You know, that, that could change as we move ahead here, but that, at this point, it's on 5118. At this point, we have Brooklyn's donation of $15,000 currently in the 2018 budget for the senior center. Hopefully, that, that stays there. We're going to try to conduct the audit of cable TV fees. We never got to that this year. We're going to try to do it next year. We also never got to doing the additional signage for the Rotary Bike Trail. We have money in the budget for that. And then we'll talk some more about this on Thursday, but we're continuing planning for JC Park West with the baseball organization. And then last, the last slide, we continue not to use what's called fund balance for ongoing operations, and this is one of the main reasons the village has a good credit rating of, of what we have right now, so.
Can I ask a question related to the fund balance? You spoke a little bit ago about an advance we made to, to the library?
Yep.
Is that an interest-bearing advance?
I don't think that one.
I don't think we did it that way.
I don't recall.
That one's not.
I don't recall at all either.
No, I don't think the board approved it that way. It was just an advance.
So, it's just an advance?
So.
But it's just really short-term, right?
Yeah, yes.
Correct.
Well, we refer to say it's an interest-saving advance, right? We didn't have to borrow for what we paid cash for.
Correct. We decided, that's right, Jeff. We decided not to borrow that extra money. And this is the money that had to be used by November of this year, and by the, per Matt, with the village saying that's where the library's going, he feels comfortable. We've now made a commitment. We don't have to worry about that. We can work through the MOU, and if it takes us into next year, we're okay. But we put this on the agenda because if the library board.
The, those funds, the general fund is kept in a interest-bearing account, right?
All the funds are in, yeah, various accounts.
So, it is costing us a small amount of money to do this.
It would have cost us more money to borrow it than we'll earn in interest on the deposit.
Correct, yeah.
Well, no doubt, no doubt.
So, it's actually saving us money.
Yeah.
It's weird, it's weird math, but.
Well, I'm not, I'm talking conceptually here.
And we had, and we advanced $60,000 as we had a, you know, we did that land contract, so we had to put the $60,000 down at the end of 16 for the land contract, and rather than doing a separate borrowing for that, we decided to advance the money. And, I mean, we, I checked this out with Matt before I did all of this. Obviously, the impact fees, it gets complicated, and so I'm, I'm comfortable what we did. I, I think we actually saved money by not having to include that in the borrowing and having to worry about, like, well, we probably would have had to do a state trust fund loan, because if we'd have taken out as part of a bond issue, we couldn't have paid it back, and now, you know, we'd be having to pay interest on it. So, I, I think it was a good idea that we did it that way. And if we get that money back, it helps the, the fund balance.
Don't we normally charge interest still when we lend out of that fund?
We do. We didn't, we didn't do it this time.
Okay.
Because it was such a short term.
Right. That was my point.
Okay. Thanks, Mike.
Yep.
And Lisa.
Can I ask, are you done with your?
I am done, Jerry. Go ahead, please.
You are done? You sure?
I am done, yes.
I don't want to cut you short there, Mike.
No, I'm done.
You're doing such a nice job.
Wasn't I? Thank you.
Yeah. The, what was the, the tax increase last year in dollars? Do you remember?
Jerry, you know what? I knew you were going to ask that.
Is it in here somewhere?
No, no, I, no, I, I actually brought the.
Did you bring the sheet?
I did from, I knew Jerry was going to ask for that, so I brought.
Oh, come on.
I did. I, I have the levy worksheet. Not, I mean, not Lisa's, but.
I hate being predictable. Stop it.
So, this, so this is from the public hearing last, last year, the option 1A. So, I think that was, that was the final, I'm pretty sure. So, it, the, for an average home, it went up $52.
$52 as opposed to $16.
Which I think that's right, yeah.
That sounds right.
And what percentage was that last year?
3.88.
Okay.
Yep. Trying to think what else I predicted, Jerry. Let's see.
That's not bad, just a little over percent increase if this follows through. Do you have any of the other municipalities' estimates yet for what, what their?
As far as the tax bill? So, the county, it looks like it's going to be $54, what Joe announced the other day.
That one I knew.
Yeah, of course you would know that.
Yeah.
I think we figured 100-something for the school, just.
It's 200.
Yeah.
200, yeah.
Well, you know, I, I'm always reluctant, because these are just like.
150, maybe 150, 170.
Because, you know, these are still estimated numbers.
Right.
Okay.
And we don't know the tech, no, we don't know tech.
M A T C, no idea, right?
Haven't heard anything.
And of course, you don't know what kind of.
The lottery credit?
Yeah.
Um, we decided, we looked at that on, on Thursday or Friday last week. It's been pretty consistent. I, was it like 100 and, do you know what that was?
Between the two of them, it's usually around 2 or.
The one is 100-something and then.
One's like 147, and the other one was.
Well, you know, I don't mean to.
A little over $200.
Yeah.
Throw this whole discussion off, but I'm just trying to drill down to what.
I know. We did the same thing. We're trying to figure out what the impact would be for the, right, the, the net tax impact is, right?
There's several components to the tax bill.
Yep.
Okay.
I should, I should note, since we were talking about the levy worksheet, I should have probably mentioned that, that when we presented this in, in September, we actually, for a number of reasons, it, it went down about $70,000. So, it, you know, bringing more revenue, we want to take some expenditures out, you know, that was down from the preliminary budget that we presented back in September, so.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
Anyone?
Okay, so, takes us to item 6A, review of general fund revenues, pages one through four. Are there questions here from trustees or comments from staff?
I sort of mentioned the highway aids are still waiting on that. On page, on page two, this kind of goes back, or kind of goes to Jeff's question about building permits, you know, again, we're, we're taking a conservative, we're, we're looking at the subdivision, what's out there, and a lot depends on how quickly some of the subdivisions happen, and, you know, the weather, it's, it's just so unpredictable. Hopefully, the economy keeps going like it is, and interest rates don't go up, so as far as the building permits. On page three, I already noted that the, we are including the Village of Brooklyn's contribution for the senior center in there. Hopefully, that, that does stay.
Can we back up to page two?
Yep.
Hypothetically, what causes cemetery revenues to go down?
Less graves being sold.
Yeah, less they charge.
Oh, so it's a one-time?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, they charge a fee to dig a grave.
I was thinking about it more like rent. People aren't getting up and leaving. You do only have to pay once, right?
Yeah, you just, no, they, they make you, they dig you up if you.
I haven't got, I haven't got quite there yet, Jerry.
Permanent residents.
Well, that, that's interesting revenue stream. I guess we could.
No, it's a one-time lease.
Yeah.
Pay taxes on your six by three.
And then I, I do want to point on page three, point out that the post office, you know, generates a nice revenue stream for us, $52,000 a year, and the lease expires in 2020. They'll be probably contacting us in probably two years from now, looking to extend the lease, but just want to make sure the board knew that.
And that's still part of the capital improvement plan, right? That's still in play with the rest of.
In the civic campus plan? Yeah, exactly. We got to figure out what we're going to do with that at some point. Yeah, the building's going to have to be rehabbed, or something's going to happen over there at some point.
It's such a nice space.
Mm-hmm. And then on page four, we did carry over, as I mentioned, the overview, the $13,000 for the salary study, and then we'll, we'll talk about this when we talk about Brian's budget. We're carrying over some training for commands, command training, staffing and command training in the police department. And that, that's basically general fund revenue.
Okay. Any questions? Takes us to item 6B, discuss some possible approval of Economic Development Fund and Chamber of Commerce's 2018 budget, pages 27 and 28.
Yeah, it's on the bottom of page 27, yeah. This is, this is the money the village has annually provided to the chamber for economic development work, the fireworks and the community guide.
Okay, so for those who are watching, $3,500 for chamber economic development, $3,000 for chamber fireworks, and $1,500 for the community guide, so. Need to make any comments here, Judy, or just nod your head?
Thank you. Judy Knudsen, the executive director of the Oregon Chamber of Commerce. I just want to say thank you for the contribution last year, and thank you for considering it this year. We are. For the village, we just finished the video. We've done several ribbon cuttings and several groundbreakings with the village, different things that I really, I'm getting phone call after phone call. We are getting so many businesses that want to move to Oregon, so I'm hoping we get a business park someday. So, I know you're working on the budget, but it's just something that, you know, I'm keeping in the back of mind. I got two more phone calls today. People want to move to Oregon. Oregon's a wonderful place to live. So, just something that I just wanted to bring to your attention, and that would also bring in tax revenue for us. So, thank you, though. I really appreciate, I work very well with the village, and it's, it's working very well. So, thank you for your contribution to the chamber.
Yeah, you're welcome, and we appreciate the great working relationship with regard to the video. I recently talked to two former residents who now live in other states that watched the video, and they were very impressed. So, it made them proud to be from Oregon.
Good, thank you.
They almost want to be back.
Tell them, come on back.
And thanks for your leadership, Judy. Relationships are a two-way street.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay. Anything else on that? Okay, so we need a motion second on pages 27 and 28 for the chamber.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay. Takes us to item seven, pos, joint meeting with Cable TV Committee. Good evening, John. The committee members, do you have a quorum here?
Yeah.
Yeah, if you want, just all sit in the front row here and then call the meeting to order.
Oh, I didn't see him sitting back there.
What would the, Steve, what would be the appropriate way for me to engage in this section as a member of the, as a, the board liaison to the?
Yeah, you can do just like you are right there. Judy is on the library board, and she was right there with the library board, doing the same route, so if that works for you, that's fine.
Yeah, is it important for me to recuse myself from the conversation or abstain from the vote?
No, you just proceed as a committee member and a trustee. No problem. Thank you for checking, so.
Are you ready for me to call our meeting to order?
Yeah, go ahead.
I hereby call the meeting of the Oregon Cable Access Committee to order. Roll call. John Vontz, the bill president. Jeff, you want to go next?
Here.
And your role?
Board liaison to the OCA, the Cable Access Board.
Thank you, Judy.
Board liaison to the Chamber of Commerce.
Say your name out loud for her.
Judy Knudsen.
Paul Zwerker, Program Director.
Great.
Kermit Traskas, Secretary of Treasury.
And I think, given that our conversation today is going to be centering around budgetary items, I'd like to have both Paul and Kermit approach to be able to speak with you. And Steve, I turn the meeting over to you.
Okay. So, item A here is discussion of possible approval of the cable TV budget for 2018, and for the binders, this is pages 35, 35A, and 36. So, welcome, gentlemen. Have at it.
I'll begin to thank, first off, thank you all for having us present tonight. We want to bring forth a thank you for the allocation of funds from last year for our new equipment, our new camera equipment. While we have been trying to move forth in working with local businesses in raising revenue throughout, through using those cameras, it's just starting to begin. The village was generous enough to work with the chamber and bring, bring some revenue towards us by allowing us to work on the video that we did for the Village of Oregon. We're also working with Beehive Homes currently with another video for them. The $9,000 or so that we used for the cameras has kind of come back to us in this, in a different way. The quality that we've improved our, through our videos, our recordings, our broadcasts with, by using that equipment, has made it much easier for me to raise, to raise funds, to raise underwriting and donations. I've attained about $9,000 so far this year in funds and donations to OCA Media. I hope to increase that again before the end of the year. Being able to livestream board meetings, parades, high school events is now much more seamless due to this equipment interfacing with more recently purchased the equipment that we are currently broadcasting and live streaming with right now. We have a school board meeting going on live right now that we're using that equipment, some of that equipment for, and we're livestreaming this meeting through that equipment that Being able to livestream board meetings, parades, high school events is now much more seamless due to this equipment interfacing with more recently purchased equipment that we are currently broadcasting and live streaming with right now. We have a school board meeting going on live right now that we're using that equipment for, some of that equipment for, and we're livestreaming this meeting through that equipment that the village has provided some funds for. Just basically want to reiterate that, oh, there's one more thing, excuse me. When we moved into the high school recent, in April, we had the option of running ten thousand dollars worth of cable from Charter from here to there, and continuing to, to live, to livestream and broadcast our events that way, or purchasing a piece of equipment that can interface and livestream for a thousand dollars, and that's what the village was able to accomplish with us. So instead of running a cable, we're now broadcasting through a small interface through the internet. That was a nice savings, and that allows us to go wherever we want if, if need be, if we have to move again. So there's a ten thousand dollar savings in, in a way. Finally, I just wanted to thank you all for the equipment, for the support, for the recognition we are receiving throughout the community. People are coming up to us for wearing our crew shirts after a football game, thanking us for our quality, for the, for just doing their job, and allowing them to see their kids on TV, or as it were, the high school kids coming up to me and thanking me for allowing them to see themselves on TV. So I think that's about all I have to say. Thank you.
Go ahead, Kermit.
You all have a copy of the budget included in your packet. It's similar to other years, the request, a hundred and twelve thousand, which we've had for the past couple of years. Reminder that this is not tax money. This is Charter Cable TV, or Charter Cable franchise fee to the village, and so there's no tax dollars that go to support cable TV. It's all from the franchise fee and funds that we raise. And as Paul mentioned, over nine thousand dollars already this year in the underwriting and some subscriptions that we've gotten from people, as well as selling the little DVDs that we have, of plays and things that the students have done. There's one very successful play. We sell about sixty or seventy DVDs, and they're more for the grade school kids. The parents still want DVDs of what the kids have done, so we do a number of those. So the budget is there before you. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them. One addition that Tom Kirchdorfer, who couldn't be here tonight, took an equipment list that we had and created an inventory list. Along with that list, we have the price, the approximate price of what that piece of equipment costs, and then the replacement cost in the future. And he took that out over really twenty years, but, you know, if you go out five or ten years, and spread out when certain items would have to be replaced. And that, you'll see on the bottom, we had set aside for purchase, five thousand dollars, that one of the pieces of equipment that we're looking at is really our broadcast piece of equipment, and that's twenty thousand dollars. So we couldn't possibly get that in one year, but if we set money aside over years, it's still operational now, but at some point in the future, that does need replacing. So, any questions on the information provided?
I'd just like to make a comment if I could. So since joining the board and having Steve assign me to the OCA Cable Access Board, I've really learned a lot about a group of folks that are really singularly dedicated to enhancing the quality of life in Oregon, and they pretty much go unnoticed, and they pretty much go unrecognized, because we just assume that when we turn on the cable access channels, there's going to be a program there, and that program's going to be professionally done. And, you know, Dan comes here every single board meeting and sits behind those monitors, and nobody sees him. He doesn't show up on TV, but if it weren't for him, nobody would see us on TV. So I just want to congratulate OCA for their professionalism first and foremost, and they just continue to become more and more professional. I don't know if it's because I'm around them and more aware, or if it's just that the engagement, it just seems like the energy level in that room has gone up. And Paul, as a, as a leader of that group, I think, has challenged the group to think in more and more professional ways. Because of Paul's background, he brings that to every single meeting, and he brings that to the room. So I want to recognize Paul and the staff for the great work that they do in their professionalism. Efficiency, you know, it really, it was Paul that was trying to find a less expensive place for OCA Media to rent, and Paul had a couple of stop-starts, but in the end, created a partnership with the school district that wound up creating a mutually beneficial relationship, rental relationship, one in which OCA Media was able to, to save money, albeit charter fees, but these are dollars then that can be deployed towards technology and other things to help improve the product that they're able to deliver. But it was, it was Paul and the board, and it was the team sitting down and thinking about how can we do this cheaper, how can we do this better, that created that opportunity, and I want to applaud them for that, because I, I felt very impressed by that work that they've done. The conversation that Kermit's having right now about thinking about the equipment and the fact that the equipment depreciates over time, this is technology that they work with, hundred percent. It's cameras, it's video monitors, it's computers. For them to be thinking about, thinking forward and, and being prepared for when a camera needs to be replaced, and when a monitor needs to be replaced, and when an interface needs to be replaced, that's relatively new, but they're hard at it, and I want to applaud them for that, because I just think that that ultimately creates transparency, which allows us to feel very confident that the dollars that they get from Charter are being well-used, and ultimately creating the community of, of Oregon that we all love to work in and love to live in. So, those are my comments.
Yeah, thank, thanks, Jeff, and I would add to that, if you read the comments Joe Prezi had as he presented his budget about Dean County being the most rapidly growing county in the state and creating the most jobs, and a very desirable place to live, and there's competition for people and businesses to move to these communities, and as Judy said, this is a very desirable place, and OCA does a great job of presenting that. And it's not just that video that you did, it's the high school sports you do, and the things you project, and all the different things you do, is very helpful to the community in presenting that. And it's like you're your own, as Jeff's talking, it's your own little cult. You're there working, doing the stuff that needs to happen, and doing that in a good way, and we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Other comments?
Just a comment too, also, the students at the high school help you all a lot, and, and that's good for them, too. They enjoy it, too.
Yeah, thanks, darling. I did mean to mention that, that it's a great, it's a great way for kids to get some experience and grow and build as individuals also, so, good for you for doing that. I'm glad that's working out well at the high school. It's a great place to be.
It's a great partnership.
Yeah, yeah. Partnerships are two-way streets, so. So, and thanks for your leadership there, too, Paul. We appreciate that.
I should mention that in order to move to the high school, the village did advance us the nine thousand dollars, which was then deducted from our quarterly allocations the remainder of the year. But that work and working with Charter, the downtime in the actual move when we were off the air was two hours.
About two hours.
And that's a lot of equipment and technology to get from Market Street to the high school, and to only be off two hours was really quite an amazing feat.
It is, good.
It's a, it's an individual, it's not an individual effort, it was a group effort. We are staffed with several part-timers, myself included, and volunteers like Kermit and Tom Kirchdorfer, and everybody else that pitched in was, it's the only way we got things done that way with what we were able to.
Yeah, good.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I have one last comment, and that's, it's just a typo. Likes, under license and permits, it's cable franchise.
Okay, so we will go back to item A, it's discussion and approval of the cable TV budget, so we need that motion, please.
So move. Sorry.
A second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? We're all done. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. You're all set.
Thanks for your leadership, John.
Yeah, then you'll need John to do the adjournment.
Thank you.
I call for a motion to adjourn. A second. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, or adjourn. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Okay, item eight, police budget, discussion possible approval. The police budget is on pages eleven and twelve.
Let me start off by saying thank you. My first two years here has been very incredible. It's been a pleasure to work with the board and Mike and Lisa, and I just want to say that, you know, not, not knowing a whole lot about the community when I got here, it's, it's been very nice, and it's been a seamless transition to, to come here and work with a board of your highest caliber, so I appreciate that. We can talk a little bit about pages eleven and twelve. If you have any specific questions on that, we tried to get these numbers as, as accurate as possible. Some of the accounts have gone up a little bit, some have gone down a little bit, so with that, are there any specific questions on eleven and twelve?
No questions?
Nope, all right.
It's a lucky night.
Real quick, chief.
Yeah.
Page twelve, public safety building. Can you just talk through how, how the salaries have changed in that area? It seems like a pretty big drop. Must have been something similar to the custodian being.
Same thing.
Same thing that Nicky talked about.
Custodian going into contract services.
Custodian coming out, cleaning service coming in.
Thank you.
You bet.
You'll see it in the village hall and the senior center building as well, the same arrangement.
As if that's going to stop me from asking.
Please go ahead and ask the same, that's fine. That's why we're here.
I love that about you, man. I'll forget this in an hour.
We could talk a little bit about the ten-year staffing plan. I prepared the memo on that as well, and you have additional information that was sent out that I put in. I continue to advocate for more staffing. I, I gave you guys the information a while ago about our staffing levels now, and that's based on our current call volume, calls for service, and that is, that has us right now at four officers. Well, we were four officers short. You guys graciously approved us to add an additional officer last year, and this year we did that, but we're still three short, so my initial question to the board was, I'd like to get those three officers on board as soon as possible, and to Mike and Lisa, how do we do that and phase that in over time? The ten-year staffing plan, then I went ahead and I added, as you can see in, in the memo that you just got, I added that based on the projected population. That's, as Mike would say, is if we don't go into a recession or something like that, but I asked him for the numbers of what he thought it might be at that point in ten years, and he said, well, try to use fifteen thousand, but.
I did say that, I guess, yeah.
Yeah, and so that's what I did, and I, I averaged that on a thirty-three percent increase. So basically what that means is we would add an additional six officers, that would get our sworn staff up to twenty-four. So we have to keep in mind that as the population grows, our calls for service grows, all those things that entail added population also requires more service from our department. And so, once we do that, again, the board needs to think about how are we going to implement these new officers, and how are we going to maintain those services, because right now, we're still three down. So how do we, how do we get that into the budget? I've talked to Mike, and I've talked to Steve about that shortages. So, you know, it's interesting, if you look at the memo and, and talk about some of the things that we are right now, as I looked at our current staffing levels, which was at the time two hundred and fifty-two days, you can see in here that, and at least one of these shifts, we only have one officer on duty. So if you think about that, it, we constant, as, as you look at our reports, we're constantly involved in domestics, we're constantly involved in OWIs, traffic accidents. That drains us of valuable resources at the police department just by one of those calls. So if we have a domestic incident, for example, we only have one officer on, we got to pull someone from the county, if they're available. And when we do that from the county, then they're short, wherever they're coming from. And so when that happens, and then if we have a domestic, and then we have a traffic accident with injuries, which happens on a regular basis, where are those people coming from? They have to come from the county as well, so we're really depleting those services. So my, my goal is to at least have two officers at a minimum on every shift, twenty-four hours a day. We're not there yet. With another three officers, I think we can get there. But that only gets us to where we need to be now. That doesn't account for the additional growth of the village. So that's the information I tried to give you guys in the memo. That's the, the information I tried to give you in the statistics on the calls for service. And so if you have any questions on that, please let me know, but I would really like the board to think about how and when is it going to be possible to try to get us up to staffing as soon as possible, and I realize it's not going to happen overnight, so just kind of keep those things in mind, and I appreciate the thought on that.
I appreciate your realistic approach to this, for keeping us well-informed. As Brian said, I talked to him a few weeks ago through an email that he sent, and I called and asked about, you know, how often is this happening with one on duty, and you put this together with the report we get each month on, on the OWIs and domestics, that type of thing. It's pretty troublesome. And I thought, would I want my son or daughter to be a police officer going into these things solo? No, I would not. So I think this needs to have some discussion, once this budget process is done, and how we move forward with this in, in the next budgets and how we make this work. And I know that's a curveball for Mike and Lisa. They do a great job with the budget, and I know that, that's not going to happen in two thousand and eighteen, but just going forward, how we're going to make this happen. I, I personally think this staffing in the police department is very important, and how do we blend this in with the timing of a new library and all the other things we have in the capital improvement plan and so on. So I would encourage you to take page eleven A out of your binder, and put that in the file, hang on to it, so you've got that to refer to, because when the budget's done, the binders get closed up, handed in, and put to piles. So this will be, I think, good information to have in a few months to take a look at.
Well, is it a foregone conclusion that this is a two thousand and nineteen issue, and that it's not a red line issue for today?
Well, I think it'd be pretty tough in two thousand and eighteen to do another officer, seven, at least seventy thousand dollars, but I think when the budget's done, that we talk about how quickly can we do this and add to it.
It'd be probably closer to, I, I was just talking to Brian about this morning, I think, and what we've always done, because typically a police officer, just because, because of what the police officer is, it's one of the most expensive positions as far as employee to add. We've, we've always, we've always feathered it in. We, we start the position as of July or something like that, get it in, get it into the budget, and then we have it funded the following year, obviously, for the full year.
Yeah.
So, so if you, so when you want to add a police officer now with the, with their new wage scale, I think we're figuring what benefits and everything, it's ninety thousand dollars, so half a year would be about forty-five thousand, yeah.
So do you think that's realistic, that we could plan this July to bring an officer in to be fully funded in nineteen, or nineteen?
We have to ask, excuse me, we have to think about if we, if you approve it in July, then we have to do the hiring process, and so by the time that all gets done, it's going to be, you know, nineteen, pretty close to it anyway.
Well, the idea being, I'm sorry, I don't mean to cut you out of the question that I asked.
So Jeff, are you, are you saying to put the money in for this, for eighteen, seven-one-eighteen, that the position start, or?
So what I'm wondering is, you know, and chief, to your point about this being a process that you'd have to go through, projecting out the start of the process to where the employee would come on board about July of eighteen, and we would have a half a year salary expenditure in eighteen, followed by a full year salary expenditure in nineteen?
So you have to go back on, well, to that tax levy worksheet and add forty, you know, approximately forty-five thousand dollars to it. I, I don't know, it, I, I don't even take a guess what it would do to levy at this point, or the, or the average increase on a house without plugging that number in.
So do you think, you know, going back to what we were talking about earlier, that there's any way that, that you and chief together could find the money in the budget as it stands, as opposed to having to add it to the levy?
I think that would be extremely difficult. We were at ninety dollars a house not too long ago, and a lot of stuff's been cut out.
Depends on how much our roof is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's true.
It's operations and then there's borrowing, so.
Well, there's some capital improvements in there in terms of squad cars. I mean, what if those got pushed off a year?
But that's borrowing, that's what we're saying.
I see. So my only, my concern is this, and, and I could have led with it, but I chose not to. It's easy to say that, that one officer that has to work that one shift is just going to have to wait until twenty nineteen, but, but I'm not that officer, you know, and I would hate to react to a situation that was caused by not having the proper staff, and so in my mind, I'm always kind of trying to think, you know, is. And so in my mind, I'm always kinda trying to think, you know, is this a, is this a yellow line issue? Or is this a red line issue, or a green line issue? And the way that Brian, Chief, has presented it, to me, it's more of a yellow to a red line issue. And the other thought that I have is if I am that officer, and if I do get put into a, a bad situation and, and something happens, that's gonna take an officer out of duty, off duty as well. So now you're potentially down two, not one. And, and so I'm just simply fleshing this all out now, so that when I vote on the budget, I can in good conscience go into eighteen, knowing that I've at least talked about it?
So we, we can do something very simple for Thursday night. We can just, we'll plug forty-five thousand dollars more into the levy. And we'll redo the levy sheet and just, I mean, without trying to go back and try, but we're not gonna find forty-five thousand dollars in the budget. And going back to one of the questions Jeannie had about the library budget, if one or two people take family health insurance, you know, that, that could just put the whole budget out of whack, to be honest with you. But it's not, I mean, we, we can just show that, show you what the impact would be. And that's a board decision, how much we're gonna raise the levy, obviously.
If I could speak, why don't you wait till the last meeting for that exercise?
Till the twenty-third?
Yeah.
Okay.
That way we'll know if there's any other-
Sure.
unforeseen expenses that you have to plug in. You know, there's still, gives us a little time.
Well, that's true, and you, and you and Darlene are gonna be there anyways on Thursday, so, yeah.
Right, yeah.
Okay. I, I just made note of it.
Would it make sense to do a three-month scenario also? Start the officer in October?
We, we can do whatever the board, yeah, we, we could-
I'd like to see that.
Okay. So start at-
I mean, the sooner the better, but we have to be just leave one as also.
Yep. Yep. Sure.
Sorry to throw you there.
No, that's fine. No, we, it's, we'll just give you different options. It's, right, something bigger. Lisa and I can adjust the levy sheet.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, sure.
For putting in the extra work.
Sure.
And for your comments, Steve.
Yeah. So anything else on the tenure staffing plan?
No, I, I appreciate the board recognizing major issues there, especially with being as short-staffed as we are and only having one officer on. You know, it's just, it's, it's been uncomfortable since I came that there's only been one officer on for, for quite a few shifts. And then basically, the whole shift, the entire day. And, you know, with today's society and how things are going, it's just becoming more and more dangerous to, to be an officer, unfortunately. So I appreciate the board's thought on that.
A quick question on that also. Chief, if we, at some point, we gotta start adding vehicles if we add officers, right?
I'm glad you said that. God's coming up.
Okay. I'm probably getting ahead of you, but, so if we add an, if some, by some miracle, the money is there, this vehicle gets added quicker also, doesn't it?
Well, I can, I can jump ahead to that. Basically, what I'm proposing is that we just keep a vehicle in the fleet. For example, we have the expedition that the former chief had that the supervisors drive right now. And what I'm proposing to do is, we have two detectives, we only have one vehicle. So I'd move that to the detective bureau and just keep one of the squads that, from going out of the fleet and selling and auctioning, and just keep it in the fleet, and the supervisors can drive that one.
So that's one of the twenty-eleven ones?
What's that?
One of the twenty-eleven expeditions?
That, yeah. One of those, the expeditions are the K-9 squad.
Right.
That's the one with seventy thousand. The other expedition is the supervisor squad. It's only got forty-seven thousand. That would go to the detective bureau.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
And then we just keep another squad in the fleet.
By the way, thanks for this nice worksheet with all the-
Yeah, you bet.
With all the vehicles and their mileage.
Mike likes to see those every year.
Ed, Mike.
Jeannie does too, I know she likes our squads. Okay, so moving on to the twenty-seventeen accomplishments and goals. It's kinda hard for you guys to see, 'cause it's in black and white, but I think it was on the other packet that you could see.
Actually, yeah, there's some color.
You have any color?
Yeah.
Oh, fantastic. You didn't spare any expenses on that?
Oh, absolutely not.
Kinda like a burnt sienna.
Almost school colors, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah. There we go.
So you can see, we got a, a number of things accomplished this year. One of the big things was the core accreditation that was just approved on October second by the Wiley-Ag Board. I'll get a certificate for that, but I'll also receive a plaque at the Midwinter Conference in the Wisconsin Dells. And so, once that happens, I'll bring that back to the board for you guys to see that. But that's a big deal. And then we'll begin next year working on the full accreditation process. So just a reminder, the, the accreditation process itself, they went through, was thirty-nine core standards. The full accreditation process is two hundred and thirty-five. So it's a little lengthier process to go up and undergo. I won't go through each one of these, but you can see in next year's goals, I talked about the accreditation process, continue working on staffing, training some new instructors for certain specialty areas, emergency vehicle operations, field training officer, defense and arrest tactic instructors. I'd like to continue to work on the Emergency Operations Center. That was one of the monies that I'd like to have carry over to do that. It's also, once we get to full accreditation, you have to have an Emergency Operations Center. You have to have a yearly planning for that and exercises. Along with that, storm-ready community, that's basically, you have to go through some certifications to let the National Weather Service approve you as being storm-ready, so you prepare for those kind of emergencies. Along with the Spillman RMS conversion, I wanna get that all completed as far as the data itself. You'll see that in there. I have it in my budget for ten thousand dollars to complete the conversion for that. We talked a little bit about the confidential informant program. LEEDs program for detectives, that is a program, it's a software program that really tracks down when people go to pawn shops and they pawn stolen items. That program there, every time they go to a pawn shop, it all gets documented. This program basically allows our detectives to search for things like that. So it really comes up as a hit, so it kind of advances our detective work, and they're able to track down people who may have gone car shopping in the village, I'll say, and stolen things out of homes or vehicles. And then I would also like to add another bike officer. I'd like to build that program, so we have several officers that are certified in the bike patrol, and they can go out and through the community and on the trails and things like that, kinda like Ted Gilbertson did this year. It's a specialty training, so continue to, continue to build on that. Any questions on that?
I was curious if you've had any particular problems by not having an, an Emergency Operations Center? Has that created difficulties?
Not yet. But I don't wanna be there if it does. So we just had a tornado in Madison. You know, something like that happened here. I don't have anywhere for everyone to go. All the department heads, anywhere, anybody from Dane County Emergency Management on down. I don't have any place for them to go to, to meet and coordinate any kind of activity like that. So that's the goal. And my goal is to use the municipal courtroom for an Emergency Operations Center. But I need to be able to equip that. So that's what I'm looking at right now, is trying to figure out the equipment that I need to be able to bring that facility up to make it operational.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay. Police building. I don't think there's anything on that necessarily on page twelve. The last, the other one, what page is it on? Where's the roof, Mike?
That's back, that's back in four fourteen.
That's back, all right, we'll get to that one.
Yeah, that's in camp.
Uniformed itself, nothing has changed there. Those are per union contract, what each officer gets for their uniform allowance. Emergency government, page sixteen. I think everyone, the DaneCom costs have gone up just slightly. Nothing too major there with the changes. Same with the crossing guards. Nothing out of the ordinary there, just wage, a little wage increase on there. Animal control, nothing really changed there. We don't have a whole lot of fees there as far as animal control, just our expenses for food and things like that. Police special revenue account, the explorers. I think Sergeant Cass and SRO Shuey have done a great job of kinda rebuilding the explorer program in the schools. I think we're up to seven explorers right now, so they're doing a good job with that. These are just donation accounts here. Yeah, explorers program, community policing shop with the cop, those are all grants and, that we get from the community to be able to continue to work with those organizations. Shop with the Cop just came out, that's a pretty good organization as well, to be able to provide services for youth. The police canine fund, forty-five and forty-six. The canine fund, the canine needs a new squad this year. They, they are gonna go in and purchase half of the vehicle and all the equipment there. Thankfully, we just had a great golf outing that raised, I think, almost ten thousand dollars. So that was nice. So we'll, we'll be able to do that for them this year. And he, he requested this year that we have an unmarked vehicle, so we're not gonna stripe the vehicle for the canine unit. And the primary reason for that was, is he wants to be able to park it in front of his house and not have everyone and their brother know that he's a cop, especially with today. So I, I said, that's fine. I know most of the other agencies across the area, they don't mark their canine squads anymore either. Let's see. Forty-five and six.
Page seventy-three is the-
Page seventy-three. The four fourteen account. State police grants, the forty-five hundred, that's, we're, basically that seatbelt grant money there, but we put that back in, so we can cover the cost of the MDC there. That's at least a thing that we have to kinda make sure we can maintain and track the money. Right, Lisa?
Yes.
Yep. Emergency Operations Center Fund is in there, that's the seven thousand dollars. And then, on the next page, seventy-four, the big one is the roof. So we have a sixteen-year-old roof that is cracking, all the shingles are cracking and leaking. And so we've gotten several estimates on that. Sixteen-year-old, and it's warranted for forty years. So the question that we have is, do we, we submitted a warranty claim. They have approved us for fifty-nine percent, I believe, of that claim, right? I think it was fifty-nine percent, but it's of shingles that are of poor quality.
Yeah. That, that's the more important point.
Yeah. So the shingles are of poor, of poor quality, so we need to decide, okay, do we need to continue with those types of shingles? Or do we wanna get a better quality shingle and hopefully get forty years out of a forty-year shingle? And so, the estimates right now, I think the best estimate that we got in was eighty-nine thousand.
And we have a hundred and twenty-four, nerd, but it, we did get it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so that's kinda where we're at on that. We need to figure out how we're going to replace the roof on the PD. And if you have, if you've looked at the roof on the PD, it is enormous. Whereas the president would say it's, oog. You don't, you don't really know that until you look at it.
Yeah, you don't really see, I'm like, why is it so expensive?
It is huge.
You don't see that from the tree.
Yeah.
A lot of valleys, a lot of peace and valleys.
So, you know, people talk about when they're, when they're building buildings, right? Do we, we'd make a one-story building, or make a two-story building? Well, you don't really think about, okay, if we do a one-story building, how big is the roof gonna be, depending on how, how, the, the square feet that goes from, basically, it's the garage, all the way around. Yeah, it's, it's, it's huge, so.
So Jeff Rau has been doing a lot of homework on this. We've actually talked to John Bano and Scott Myers to get their professional opinion about this. So obviously, at some point, the discussion about the roof's gonna come forward when Jeff, Jeff's in the room. We'll talk to Jeff. And we're, obviously, we're concerned about not putting it, you know, the, a poor shingle back on the building and then passing this problem on to somebody else. Say, well, fifteen years from now, you'd be putting a new roof on it again. I don't think we're gonna do that, hopefully.
How would you pay for the roof?
How will you pay for this? We'll borrow for this.
We've talked about some of the contractors, we've talked about putting on the metal roof, 'cause those are lifetime mortgages, but that's like triple the cost, so.
So, and, and Jeff is thinking that we maybe take the shingles, but we'll just put them aside and use them for bathrooms and, you know, smaller, smaller buildings?
So you can't apply the cost of the shingles to a different shingle?
Not with them.
Not with them.
And, and keep in mind, if we take the shingles, right, it's a semi-full of shingles.
I was gonna say, that's a huge pile of shingles.
Well, Jeff's got it all figured out, so wait for Jeff to be here.
Got it all figured out. I can't wait to hear that.
Be a good story?
I know.
It'll be a ten-minute story.
Another option that I have in my mind is that if you put the fifty-nine percent discount shingles on the roof, you buy yourself five, ten years, that gets you past the civic campus, and maybe puts you out into the borrowing where, where some of that money drops off, some of the money drops off the borrowing. So, so you already know automatically going into it that you got a thirteen-year roof, but it gives you thirteen years to plan for a better roof. I don't know that you're gonna get forty years out of any roof.
No.
Yeah, it's hard to say, but-
Yeah, I was gonna say, forty years.
Well, I told Jeff, it's like, it's like when you, you buy a very expensive pair of tires, give you eighty, and you ever tried to get a warranty on your tires?
You never get eighty thousand miles out of eighty thousand.
Oh, it's always depreciation on the great tire.
What did you do, what did you drive over? I mean, so it's-
Plus you got fifteen years to pray for a hailstorm.
Nice.
So anyways, well, we'll, obviously, this is gonna take a lot more discussion with the board. It's, it's, this hundred and twenty-four, right now, is a placeholder in the budget.
So what kind of a life predictive shingle is this? The ones in the warranty?
I, I think it's thirty, I think, isn't it?
Those are forty shingles.
Those are forty?
That's why it was fifteen.
And I've never, I have to be a genie. I, I've, I would never, I mean, I know what you're saying, I would never say a forty-year shingle. I mean, I've always said thirty years. If you get thirty years on your house, that's, that's pretty good.
Yeah, I mean, twenty years is probably the average. A house.
They say forty, but it doesn't work that way.
No. So how do you mark it, right?
But don't, I mean, I'm with the board, I think that we're rushing out to buy this. Is that, you know, we have to show you the bids, we gotta obviously go through the process and bring it to the board for, for board.
And hear Jeff's song and dance.
And listen to Jeff's story, yes.
You sure that's on TV?
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
I'm priming my mouth for it.
That was a really neat little ad you got there at the bottom, top of page four. Appreciate that.
What are we looking at?
The Tesla?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah. We'll get to that. Let's see.
Sure you wouldn't prefer a Lotus or Ferrari?
The police vehicles, we talked about that already. Looking at our budget, and Mike put us on a strict budget of twenty thousand dollars, so we, we came within that. Some of that money is already allocated for, obviously, with the TASER purchase program. We, we did a five-year contact, contract with them, so thirty-three hundred dollars of that is already spoken for. We try to replace MDC every year, that's in there. The squad lighting systems is in there as well. Those go out a few years. And I think, any other, any questions that I may have missed on here that you guys have specifically?
I don't see any.
Okay.
Waiting for the Tesla.
There it is. It's coming up next. So you guys know that I'm, I, I like technology. I also like to be efficient and try to save money. So what I did was, my squad is getting up there in miles as well. I thought about the new technologies that are coming out. And obviously, Tesla and electric vehicles, in my estimation, are the wave of the future, of the way things are going. Tesla, a while ago, had put out a partnership with the Los Angeles Police Department. They're doing a survey, they're doing a study on the Model S's, which is the more expensive version of the Tesla, obviously, on how that would work for a law enforcement vehicle. So they're doing that current study right now. My thought was, is my vehicle's coming up. The Model Threes are reasonably priced. I think they're about thirty-six thousand dollars. And that's basically the entire cost, except for, you know, if you do an admin vehicle, you have to put some lighting in there, so that's a little bit more on that. I don't know what that would be, 'cause no one's ever done that yet, so that would have to be a cost that put in there. But, so I started talking with Tesla and a gal there, and she was very excited to, to talk with me and, and about the opportunity. So with the board's approval, we could possibly do the Tesla for an admin vehicle, and that would end up saving us quite a bit of money over time, because obviously, I'm not paying for gas. There's, there's no maintenance on it. The only thing that you pay for is the tires when those are up. Any upgrades is, is done basically like your iPhone or your Galaxy, it's done over the air. If there's any kind of service that's needed, they have mobile service units that actually come to you and do any kind of repairs. So they, they, she's given me all kinds of cost comparisons. She's basically talked to me about doing the Model S as a patrol vehicle, and she's given me several cost comparisons with what a two thousand and seventeen Ford Explorer is, based on the current cost and the- with what a two thousand seventeen Ford Explorer is, uh, based on the current cost and the lifespan, uh, maintenance costs, gas prices, things like that. So, as she predicted, um, over three years, the cost of a Model Te- uh, twenty-seventeen Tesla, which is a seventy-five D, which is a battery size, um, is fifty-four thousand ninety-seven dollars. And over three years for the Ford Explorer all-wheel drive is fifty-eight thousand one fifty-two. And I said, wait a minute, the cost of a Tesla's like seventy-five thousand dollars itself, how, how can that be? Uh, and she, and as, as I spoke to her today, she said, uh, basically, because when, when our life cycles of the vehicles are three years, we trade them back or we auction them off and we get that money back. Well, if you do that with a Tesla, you're gonna get back forty-five thousand dollars instead of eight thousand dollars for the Explorer. So, that's where she figures that money in. So, in the grand scheme of things, as I ran the numbers myself, sure, her cost of fuel was a little bit higher, it was two dollars and fifty cents. I put it down to two dollars and thirty cents. Her tax was higher, it was at seven, and ours is obviously five and a half or somewhere in there. Um, it actually came, comes down to a difference of four thousand dollars. So, the estimated life cost of the Tesla is fifty-four thousand and the Ford Explorer is fifty-eight thousand. Now, the thing about the Teslas is their first Tesla vehicle, um, their two thousand and fifteen model, is already over three hundred thousand miles. So, you don't have to change out the vehicles like we do every three years. And so, as I was averaging those out, you're talking, if you do a six-year cycle, you're talking saving ten thousand dollars. And if you do a nine-year cycle, you're talking saving twenty thousand dollars in, in a police fee, 'cause you don't have to do the changeovers and you're not buying and selling new vehicles. Um, and so, if that's the case, uh, you, you're talking about substantial savings. So, my next question was, well, how do we charge those? 'Cause doesn't it take longer to charge the electric vehicles? Uh, yes and no. Um, she was talking about putting a supercharger possibly here for the police fee for that. So, I'm getting a little ahead of myself, but that's kinda the things that I've just started looking at for police vehicles. How does that make us more efficient? How does that save the village money? Uh, but in the meantime, my thought was, well, for sure, if I get a Model Three, which would be twelve to eighteen months out, um, that would certainly save the village a lot of money in gas costs over the, over the lifespan of that vehicle alone. So, I would like to, um, have the village, uh, board consider, have you guys consider, um, using that as an option to, um, use for an administrative vehicle. So, that's a long answer, a long explanation for...
Well, that's gotta come back to the board at a future meeting. We're not asking the board to make a decision right on it, yep.
Chief, when you do bring it back, is there anybody else locally that you can...
Locally? No.
It has one.
LAPD, Denver PD, and Oregon PD are the first three D's. That are looking at these vehicles.
Right.
Yep.
How, how about the speed in that for them? Are they fast?
They're extremely fast. I'll just say they're, they're faster than anything we have right now.
Yeah, they're topped in mile away, six thousand pounds, goes zero to sixty in two-point-eight seconds. It outruns anything on the road. Jeff's Lotus or his Lamborghini.
Yeah, and so, I've looked at, I've looked at, I've looked at Ford, yeah. I've looked at Ford, I've looked at Chevy and other things. You know, the problem is, right now, with those vehicles, is their, their range is so short right now. So, I mean, with the Tesla, you're talking two, three-hundred mile, uh, mi- mile range on those.
So, um, you had factored in gas costs, how would it impact the, and forgive me if this is, I don't know how they get charged very well, but how would it impact the electricity bill?
Yeah, so, for example, I'll look at one of her sheets here, 'cause she has that in here. The gas cost, for example, at two dollars and thirty cents, the national average for electricity for, uh, I'm assuming it's for the mile, is fifteen cents. So, if you're talking about gas, you're talking about approximately four hundred bucks a month, and if you're talking about electricity, it's a hundred bucks a month.
And then, um, since, uh, you're, you guys are already, we already have a roof issue with the police department to deal with, um, something like solar panels maybe to consider to, I know those are kind of expensive, but if you're thinking of moving in that direction, that might...
Well, you know Tesla does that too, so...
Well, Nancy, I did not know that.
You didn't know that, really?
No, I don't know much about them, except that they exist, so, you know.
Yeah, oh yeah, they're big with solar panels, absolutely. They, they just have new solar panels now for your home that you can buy as well, so...
Oh, right.
Gee.
Um, so, I actually know a lot about Teslas.
Good for you.
'Cause I'd like to own one someday. Um, so, I've been following this. Did you, have you read any of the news in the last week? They haven't been hitting their production numbers?
Yeah, I know they haven't been, especially the Model Threes, right?
Yeah, so they're supposed to make five thousand of these a quarter, uh, this last quarter, they made two hundred and sixty.
And you know how many they have outstanding?
Yeah.
Five hundred thousand.
Five hundred thousand.
Five hundred thousand.
So, I'm just saying, it'd be cool to drive a Tesla, but I don't know if there's gonna be any for sale in a very long time.
Yeah, it could be. Well, they're, right now, they're saying twelve to eighteen months, so that means twenty-four, probably.
But that was based on the five thousand a quarter build, which they've made two hundred and sixty.
I'm wondering too if, if, uh, we were getting one for a police department, if they wouldn't move us up on the list.
Here's my other, my other, um, concern is that a Tesla is perceived to be a very high-end, uh, car, expensive car. And if we want our chief of police to be driving a Tesla, it's gonna create a lot of buzz around town. So, be prepared for some...
Well, it's the Model Three.
Blowback on that.
It's the Model Three, right?
I know, but dude, it's a Tesla. Like, if I drove up in a Tesla to the fire play...
Yeah.
There'd be, I'd have about ninety emails by the end of the day, and I'm just genie carpenter cheese person, so...
And I think that's why they created the Model Three, so it wasn't the, you know, you know, I'm not driving around in a Mercedes or something like that, or a Bentley or...
I would, I would, I would, I would beg to say that Tesla is gonna be more prestigious than either of those in the coming years, 'cause of the technology. There's one person who drives a Tesla in town right now, and every time he parks in a lot, there's like a crowd gathered around it.
Is that the Model X? Is that the...
Yeah, it's a ninety-thousand-dollar car.
Yeah.
Oh, wow.
Maybe then it should be the feature during safety night.
But I think their goal, their goal, obviously, is to make these more affordable. And so, municipality, I mean, they, they, they just, this Barbara gal that I've been talking to, she's part of a brand-new branch for municipal works, so they can get into municipal government and provide these vehicles for municipalities, just like, you know, like for public works or whatever it is, that they're driving around in these electric vehicles. And I think that, um, LAPD, for example, they just bought a bunch of BMW I Threes, I believe they are, for all of their administrative functions and things like that, so...
Those are good too, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think you're right, Gee. We'd have to a good PR program on why we did this, get the facts out there and let people know, this is not a hundred-thousand-dollar car.
Yeah.
Yeah.
'Cause that's the perception of a Tesla right now.
Absolutely, yeah. But, uh, uh, and I think, uh, once we, i- if this is the direction that we decide to go, we'd have to put out there the substantial savings that we'd be doing, be getting by doing this, so...
Yeah, I, I, uh, I've kinda looked into Teslas a lot too, solely because I've been at the Midwestern Renewable Energy Fair at Stevens Point in St. Paul, uh, with my son's bike shop, 'cause he has cargo bikes that are electric bikes, uh, and there are Teslas there. At Stevens Point, they had a Tesla Corral, about twelve of them, and, uh, people talk about them and, and, uh, who's the guy from Wisconsin who's one of the co-founders? Uh, it's from, uh, J.D. Struble, I believe it is, yeah, from Green Bay. And he was there, gave a talk. Tesla, speaking of the roof, actually has solar shingles that generate electricity, that you put on your shingles on. They just have a lot of stuff that they're doing, but, uh, cars are very interesting, I think, as Brian said, electric is the wave of the future. And there's a lot of models out there now. Uh, Tesla seems to be at the top of the class, performing the way we'd need for a police vehicle.
Yep, yep, especially, uh, the, the Model S's. And I talked to her a little bit about, uh, providing a government discount, like a lot of the other, um, like Ford and Chevy do as well, and that's something that she's certainly going to look into to see if that can happen, because we don't get the, the tax incentive, right, 'cause we're tax-free, so...
So, in voting on the, the budget items here for the police department, we'll vote on all those together, which includes the, uh, the item K that includes the Tesla. It's not saying we're buying a Tesla, that's basically saying, chief, we keep looking into this and proceed, and we'll come back to us at some point in time, so...
But it doesn't include the potential officer for next year, half year, third of the year, right?
It doesn't, it doesn't.
It does not include that right now. That comes back on the twenty-third.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Okay. Okay, so we need a motion and a second for item eight, A through K.
I'll make the mo- I'll second Doug.
Okay, thank you. This is all the police budget. Any further questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thanks, chief.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, item nine, Fire EMS budgets, uh, for discussion, possible approval. Note, the village is sixty-three and a half percent of the Fire EMS budget. Uh, I'll read the items right now to get them before us. Uh, Fire Protection, page fifteen, EMS, page fifteen, Review of Two Thousand and Eighteen Goals, page fifteen A, and Budget Allocation Sheet, and Capital Improvement Plan, page fifteen B. Welcome, chief. Good to see you. So, let's go ahead and get this before us with a motion right now.
I'll make the motion to bring it to the floor.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Thank you, okay. You're on, chief. And we're on page fifteen, folks.
So, I guess, before we start with the, uh, the numbers and everything else, a couple things I'd just like to say. First of all, it's been a, uh, it's, it's hard to believe it's been over a year, right, that I've been here? So, this is basically my second budget. The first budget we had last year was pretty much, uh, following up with somebody else's numbers and that kinda stuff and moving it through and that kinda thing, kinda watching the procedures, that kinda thing. But this last year, um, uh, we did a lot of different things in, in the Fire District. And first and foremost, um, I'm, I'm happy that Jeff brought up the CIP and questioned things of that nature. But at the same point, one of the biggest things that I did learn, Steve and board, is that, uh, we have a bunch of different partners in our Fire District. And of course, I'm here on behalf of the Fire Department or the Oregon Area Fire and EMS District and representing all of those municipalities. And that's the first and foremost thing that I have to remember each and every day that I come here. Uh, even though it is sometimes very easily to kinda, uh, work with the department heads here in the village and other folks, uh, that are close to us as our partners, but they're, again, they are our partners and there's a lot of different avenues that, uh, we have to work with all of them. So, to really, I'll give you the, the, uh, the cut-down version really much. One of the things that, uh, after I got, uh, this job in early, uh, I guess, January of this year, as, as named as the full-time fire chief here, um, I sat down with the commission and we had some good dialogue. Uh, and what I mean by good dialogue, we've started talking about things that, uh, I know that I never had a co- a conversation with, but, uh, myself and the commission, we, we dove through a whole bunch of things. We talked about the building that you guys built like thirteen years ago, things of that nature. We talked about all of the apparatus that we have over there. We're talking multi-millions of dollars of equipment. Some of the things that I think a lot of people forget and how old some of that equipment is and where the Fire District has been and where we need to go. We sit here tonight, we listen to about all of the things that are happening in, not only in the Village of Oregon, but in Dane County and this growth and all this other kinda stuff. And we're talking, listening to the, uh, police chief here tonight, talking about solar panels and trying to reduce costs. I think those are all things that we have to, we have to take care of. What I'm basically coming back to is, is some of the things that, uh, on the calendar, that this last year, early, and when I say early, I'm talking about May, I think Jeff and Phil from the commission probably both thought I was pretty crazy, start talking about budget and possible budgets and CIP numbers and where we wanted to go. But we, believe it or not, uh, Lisa, um, being contracted through the district, uh, of course, does our books and things of that nature. She started pulling some of these things together. We started having some dialogue with the commission and with our partners. And when I say our partners, I'm talking about the Town of Oregon and the Town of Brooklyn and, and the Town of Dunn, all the folks that make the commission and make our district whole and doing what we need to do. So, again, cutting up the speed on this thing as, as fast as I can, we had the July meeting where we brought everybody together and we talked about it. And, uh, I laid out some very large CIP numbers and some very large, uh, uh, operation numbers. And I think one of the biggest things that I got out of that meeting was, uh, we heard that we could not afford those numbers and we had to come up with some different funding, funding mechanisms for the district and, uh, some different thoughts. So, some of the things that we were looking at, of course, were grants and, uh, federal grants, things of that nature, and how we could fund it and things of that nature. Uh, of course, some of those federal grants are still not notified, uh, notified us one way or the other if we're gonna get them for SCBA's in the future or not. And then, of course, uh, we wrote for a, a tender and we wrote for an exhaust system over here in the, in the building to do something with the emissions. All of this kinda stuff that I think others have tried over the years, I'm not a hundred percent sure. Maybe Lisa or Jeff or some of the other folks might know that. But we're looking at some of this other, uh, revenues from the outside where we can possibly bring it into the district and offset some of our cost. So, after that July meeting, we met, and I, when I say we, it wasn't just the fire chief, I took some of my district partners with, sat down with the, with the village also, Lisa and, uh, Mike both, and, and again, they're very, uh, very professional and thought. We, we sat down and looked at what all of our district partners can, uh, afford, things of that nature. And we brought back a revised, uh, a revised operation plan and a revised CIP, P-plan, capital improvement plan for two thousand and eighteen. We ran it through the commission, uh, at one of our meetings prior to your, uh, last meeting here a couple of weeks ago that we had with the joint board and the, I shouldn't say the joint board, joint towns where everybody came together. And, uh, we had an approval there, basically, at that commission level, and we took it to, uh, the towns' meeting here a couple of weeks ago. So, the numbers tonight, from what I can see here, Lisa has captured both of those numbers, that CIP number and also the operational number, and moved them forward into your budget. And I would be more than happy to take any questions on any of those areas and, uh, try to address them. A lot of the, uh, lot of the money, uh, in that eleven percent increase or so that, uh, that the village is looking at, uh, in that operational budget is, again, salaries and benefits and things of that nature. Like the police department, in early, uh, January of this year, we had a tentative, I shouldn't say a tentative, we adopted a contract with the, uh, local three-eleven A for our fire union here, and we got a three-year contract going through. In that, we gave them, uh, I think it was three percent over three years, uh, with a two percent kicker for the captains. Uh, so, that was all part of that. The other thing that the, uh, the district did, uh, last year, uh, hired a, a lot of full-time people. Last year, the district hired three full-time people. Uh, those numbers have been all brought into the budget and all of the insurance and things of that nature. We went from an insurance premium standpoint of about eighty-seven thousand dollars a year to about a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars, uh, this next year in two thousand and nineteen, or eighteen, excuse me. So, that's a majority of it, uh, things of that nature. Uh, you know, people ask me, are we gonna hire any more people in, in the future, in the next ten years and things of that nature? I keep going back to this right now. We'll have to look at the growth and things of that nature, but I think our biggest, we've hired a lot of full-time staff, uh, for the district. Right now, we're working on the, uh, paid-on-premise and also the paid-on-call folks that live here. That's where we need to build out and continue. We're always, we're built out for about a call and a half usually, to be able to respond, an ambulance call, and then some on top of that. Um, and if you look at our numbers in our monthly reports, and I didn't bring them with me tonight, but you get them, I think, every Mike, every month through Mike, you can see that our numbers are, have really been growing over the, over the last year, both on fire and EMS. So, I'll leave it as that, Steve, and I'll take any questions, uh, from that Fire Department budget.
Good, and thanks for your report. It's, uh, very helpful the way you present the information and forthright and informative. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Good way to interact with us. So, questions?
So, so we added a footnote, um, to the budget in response to a, a question we received that, at the joint meeting that Glenn's referring to. We try, we try to first tell you that what, what percentage we are of the budget for the district, you know, the total district budget, our share of it, the capital budget, and then our share of the, of the capital budget, and, uh, hopefully, that's, um, helpful to, to look at those, that footnote.
Any questions? On page fifteen, fifteen A or fifteen B? Okay, so we have the motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Most curious. Thanks, chief. Looks like you're all set.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, chief.
Thank you.
Thanks for your leadership.
Keep up the good work, yeah, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, item ten, uh, Senior Center Budget, uh, for discussion, possible approval. You have the meal site, page twenty-two, outreach twenty-two and twenty-three, adult day program twenty-three, senior center, uh, pages twenty-five, ten-year staffing plan, twenty-five A, two thousand and eighteen goals and allocation sheet, twenty-five B, senior center building, twenty-five and twenty-six, and senior center donations, page thirty-eight. So, do we have a motion?
Show move.
Second.
Thank you. You're up. Welcome, Rachel.
Thank you, good evening. Um, on behalf of all the seniors in the community, I wanna thank you for your continued unwavering support of the senior citizens in the community. And on a personal note, I'd like to thank the board as well as the staff for being so welcoming to me since I entered this role three months ago. Our budget, um, in front of you tonight is the same, uh, consists of the same documents that you saw at the joint municipality meeting a few weeks ago. You've had a little more time to look through it. If you've got any questions about any of the material that's covered, from the budget to the ten-year staffing plan to goals, et cetera, I'd be happy to... to goals, et cetera, I'd be happy to answer those for you. But I know this is not new material for you tonight.
Yeah, yeah, we saw a lot at the joint meeting, so appreciate your approach. Are there any questions on the senior center budget? Like Rachel said, we saw this in detail at the joint meeting. Okay, so if there are no questions, last chance. We have a motion and second to approve the senior center budget. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's a record, by the way, for how long that took.
No Teslas in my budget.
That's next year, right? Okay, item eleven, clerk budget, discussion, possible approval. Motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments here?
I already noted that, you know, we're showing the deputy clerk starting on May first, twenty, twenty-eighteen, and then, and then there's four elections.
Yeah, that's the basic things here, right? The differences, okay. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item twelve, administrative section. Item A, village board, that's page four, municipal court, pages four, four A and five. Jessica Cox has requested reclassification of court clerk position and accompanying wage adjustment from twenty thirty-nine to twenty-one oh-two. Item C, legal, page five, prosecution budget has been increasing due to OWIs going to trial. Administrative budget, pages five and six, computers, seven and eight. Accounting and 2017 accomplishments and 2018 goals, page eight, assessor, page nine. Other general government, pages ten and ten A, that note there that the neighborhood has requested eight hundred dollars to help pay for South Main Street neighborhood sign. Item I, illegal taxes, page ten, insurance, pages ten, eleven. Planner, page twenty-seven, funding has been included to hire Vandewall for possible new youth center planning. And item L, general fund transfer to other funds, page twenty-eight. So, first comments, well, let's, let's get a motion here. We may, we'll do these all at once if we can, so we have a motion.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. And then comments from staff?
We basically tried to highlight the items on the agenda.
Yeah. Did you want to make any comments, Lisa, on item F, the goals and accomplishments? Or you don't have to straightforward, I believe it is, it is.
I, no, I don't really have anything else other than what's there.
Okay. Any questions?
Yes, the neighborhood sign, is that similar to the other ones that are in the village right now?
Um, let me, here is a picture of it, Jerry. It's in the book.
Yeah, I see it.
Oh.
It just, oh. But, I mean, it's, it's a page in the book. Is it going to be similar, or you're not looking at anything elaborate, right?
Oh, no, no, no. No, it, and actually we're.
It'll be the size.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The size.
Yeah. So we're meeting with Randy tomorrow.
It's in color, sorry.
Yeah, that's fine. So we're, they're, they're trying to work with the, to put it actually on the clinic property. And, but it's, it's complicated, because this, everything's complicated. But this is complicated because it's, it would have to be go on an outlot. And so you almost have to do what's called a CSM, and so, so we're meeting with them tomorrow to talk about it. So I have the, I have the eight hundred dollars in there. It doesn't mean that, at this point, it's, it's been approved by, you know, kind of a placeholder.
Yeah.
They have T-shirts that look the same.
Do they? Do we have other neighborhoods with signs?
Well, Bergamon, of course.
Yeah.
And, and that's, that's the difference, is that when you build a new subdivision, the developer gives you an outlot for the sign. And it's hard to go back and Rachel fit him into a current neighborhood. And Randy's working on it. I give him credit, he's trying to figure a way. And we're, that's where we're meeting tomorrow with Mike and Matt to try to figure a way to doing it.
Yeah, yeah. I know there are a lot of those in Madison.
And, and he.
And they're really nice.
He, believe me, he brings that up as he lived in Madison for a long time. I still understand that, but it's just, you know, trying to find a spot on that street is, we're trying to find something.
It seems like another way to bring neighborhoods together, to identify with that area, so I think it's a great idea.
I, I, this will come back to the board for further discussion.
Yeah.
As will Vandewall planning for the youth center.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Then I want to ask any questions?
You, go ahead, Jerry, if you want, but.
It's too premature?
Yeah.
Well, the resource network is working on that, right, Jeff? On a new youth center, it's not just the village, it's the Oregon Community Resource Network is working on that, so.
So, I mean, they're just working on a plan right now.
We would get a, we get a task order from Vandewall, and we see that would come to the board for consideration. Yep.
And I'm happy, whenever that happens, I'm happy to present as opposed to sit.
Yeah, okay. Any questions on B with the reclassification of court clerk position? The person apparently has done a good job. In fact, she asked to cut her hours from forty to thirty, because it was too many.
Sounds like an ideal candidate.
Yeah, I know, that's what I thought, too. She's doing the job. Okay, so any questions on the administrative section of the budget?
What is, what was I, the illegal taxes page?
Oh, that's, that's a goodie. That's a good one.
Those are ones Lisa charges that she shouldn't.
So you're saying she's going to be before the.
Well, for example, for example, the assessor makes an error.
Yeah.
And we have to do, make a refund.
Oh.
It goes in there. And so we have to budget, we have to show a budget for it.
If you ask a question about Lisa's budget that she doesn't like, she hits you with a tax.
Right.
That's the other thing you do, exactly, Jerry.
Any other questions? Any of those items? Okay, so we have a motion and second for the administrative section, items A through L for approval. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Items for upcoming budget meetings, gives when the meetings are. And item fourteen, motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Good job, folks. Thank you.